Good morning, everybody. Welcome to September 25th special. We have the Mini 20 Board Supervisors. We'll sit the pledge by supervisor Curtis.
I would like to introduce to the board that the state of America and to the public which says one nation, three bodies, equal liberties just for.
Thank you very much. Our motion to approve this certificate, all should be posted.
So if.
Second, second, I'll favor plea. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to pass it. So that would take us to our items, one hearing schedule. Just by our continuing our hearing from our meeting. It could be Monday at this start on Monday. And we could in continuation hearing as well today. But for now, we'll start with the larger, which would be one item, which continually can propose ended. But we have sale call warrant. Yeah. You're ready.
Come in. I just want a second.
While she's there, just want to give a special thank to everyone, the staff, everyone being in the extra time that's put in. The department heads, unions, especially to my colleagues. I think on really above the honest to an effort, really scrutinize the budgeting this to this or can be common. And this thing will put him back. So gone to a drawner. Thanks. Work is done. Just want to say that the badge is thank you to everybody for the extra what's gone to this.
Good morning, supervisors, chairman, the panel general. J is a new age of the here in the digits for twenty five, twenty six, eight props budget. The question was brought to my attention today. I go to answer question at the point for the data we receive from the library. And then it was in set aside at their improvement that is found by general fund restricted. So we don't because of grant. So originally the fund was in the normal, they're the administration as well as other improvements. So we live at almost seven million, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We divide that into sections for the improvements and the other was for share on the same. And the right side at bottom, you can get them over. It's on the side, the bottom, see we seven million dollars of the room improvement there for the library and a hundred fifty thousand dollars for another break. I think it's just.
Can we move in a little bit? Just plus on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we identify what is referred to.
Yeah, I just want to provide because just ask the question, what did I move funds for? There's funds that you see on the back part, the right, on the right hand, the loss was seven million dollars for all the rooms. You drove other routes and the five million is restricted. So apparently they don't find under administration office as part of the whole funding. So I just want to clarify that.
What are the implications with?
No, it's so early. The other which may have under general fund, we do all price because some reason. You know, capital project work part of the John bike and should be part. So we did, we pulled them off. That's out of the eighteen million dollars that we remove the saves or or that. But we did move those those prices from the Jeff fund and set aside for your action to get an improved price with Jeff fund source. And the portion is funding with revenues from library and another hundred fifty thousand sold outside. So it's not a general fund anymore. I just want to find this right run. It is the twenty sixth. So no, sorry. It is the twenty sixth is the beginning of the reserves, general reserves. Seven million dollars we get away from them because the direction of supervisors instead of use general fund, use general reserve. So that we're taking that one. However, the third quarter projects straight general ones are set because our grant has not to do with research, the fund research. We name it way so that way is receptive. That's our option. Okay.
Joel, if you would come up, please.
Uh, so let's just, um, up yesterday's workshop, I think, sorry, as a corona in two fifteen. There's a seven five million dollar general capital outweigh transfer out. The composite of transfer out is library restricted. Um, are.
No, that's the one. Yes, that's the one. So so let me think this. Do you have some details? Hmm. So this pretty, if you go back to the administrator of. Um, let me second, I can't get there. No. So there. I'll call it just one. It's always. No. If, uh. Okay. So this section. You see the eleven million, the six hundred and seventy one five fifteen at the bottom administration. That includes the seven million dollars and the library that we moved to the general fund. Some reason were there inflating the general fund. And so we those and all the R P seven million dollars out of the reserve in the the general reserve. And then we have general for strips four million dollars that we see from state for the library long one hundred and fifty thousand more. So it's out of general, it's not inflated general anymore. For some reason, we stay so that the rest was through projects and doing this right now. So that's all. So that's out of the action and just go over this fresh year. We continue. We have only made bed library so far, and we still meeting all week versus left a week to continue work with the team members for this three dollars. But also we reviewing this on the shelves. We have quite some about two point seven thirty million dollars that were removed from the level for life, which we know what the am is come from and where and went to. So we need time to read that one, be able to come back on Tuesday to continue the hearing and provide you with information. But if there's a double case, this rate is remaining. What we're going to do today, we're gonna have, we have some options to be able to meet five million dollars. We're sure that we have have a department with the options you review together, not take an example, but to to give idea we are as far. And Steve is like, he has come back. Okay. Steve also make a presentation that additional that is able to add to the library and or as a team, he was able to come out. But what I'm gonna ask Henry to come to podium and pursue you some additions. Just start with one.
Mr. Chair Borshi Art.
Yep.
Um, CEO, uh, Julio, the exit you've been pulling up.
Yes.
Is that linked on website?
Yes, that's the previous meeting.
What were you meaning? Okay, I'll go back.
I'm trying to make sure to upload to this.
Oh, that great. So that would be able to put up.
Yes.
Twenty four.
Okay. We're gonna put it this, the same, just appear every once in a while. Which.
Mine. Yeah.
Okay.
Running chair members, board heads and public. What we did, human resources on Maria's possession, we looked three different areas. We looked at Jevay, we looked at all the reason free and then also look at the Lotus. If you look at table with Jevay, we also part of the process was creating with general fund and general. So we too kind of do assessment of how much cost is general own. That also included with or public safety. And we all looked at combined general funds, non general fund, so exclusive. And then we did final job, which was general fund and non ultra fund, which include safety. So while these are all numbers here, the green segment was general fund includes public safety, non general fund. The symbol is of a hundred and thirty thousand, hundred and eleven. Also at including certain non official position and again safety. Um, the orange tabs are, you'll see that again, it equals to four hundred thirty thousand, four hundred and eleven. So that is the total amount for longevity. Um, is a total of a hundred and twenty employees that are fit, those the employees that are receiving longevity as of. Let's go to self step freeze. Um, this calculated through the of October twenty fifth through the end of this year, June thirtieth, twenty six. Again, we've gone it down through what is costing general one, including safety. We have general fund, including safety, we have a settle of one million sixty thousand. Um, separate stages, so you can see, because I know the publicity was one thing where the poor's, um, uh, big team when it to vacancies. But again, the overall total for all employees, including general and general and city, a million. Um, if you go on the right tab, that salary step ease gives the total number of these that we affect. So it's one of those groups, the total number or free for employees. We're at as of October twenty fourth, we tiered instead of five ways that we had. Uh, and of course, that is a five percent. You look at which is because of the just between the steps being for the stepping progression of salary table. The last, um, total is a total consent rated by another four days, um, in being longevity step free. And depending on how many ways, uh, if the board choose, we calculated on a month and also calculated in a two day month. Um, I can, I have separate sheet further that gives you a little bit more, um, step down of it this year. Again, accepted through general fund, general fund saved without safety. But if the table very bottom, uh, that gives the full total amount. Um, you look at the bottom tab below, it says way a month early for everybody is one four million. That's about three percent cost. If you had two days a month would be one day period, uh, total eighteen K bits left. He'll be in the October twenty fourth, two into the physical year twenty twenty six is three point two million. It's equivalent to about six point nine percent. Um, go back to this table again, where we come did all together, so you can get a picture. Um, consent for a long lease free and for a one day month be about three million. Uh, step, uh, excuse me, all of five hundred one for a two a month would be four point. So if I'm available for questions, if there's anything else you need to. To present, I could back a little bit on G two, I didn't give you a done that one, going back to table. Um, longevity there, we have two units that receive different percentage for longevity. The DSA and the enforcement instrument, a different percentage, ten year, they get five percent, fifteen years, a ten cent increase, and then twenty years, fifteen. Um, institutions, AI, Meg, point department head elects ten year, they get two point five percent, fifteen is five cent in a year, seven point five. So they have a little bit of allocations. We weren't able to get that because every unit has a different amount and there's different people from levels, but it keep overall a little bit of an effect. I'm available for questions, if you want to go over any of.
Do you have anything further before you get into deliberations and, um, comment? No. So, uh, open the book here. Uh, this is a book here, it's been a public, but go ahead. Steve, oh, Steve here now. So are you, do you want to provide information? Let's do it first. We have some loop here coming up. Let's missional invasion on. Alrighty. Chair, board, members of the book. So, um, per budgets, reading that with LDSA, where the last phase all the men heads did a deep dive into by numbers. Um, my task is to go back into OPV, EP, see if we can find any apps, um, optional funding to avail. So through this first, um, it's a big, big, big picture. Uh, that the current general fund reserve allocations, um, are essentially going to be, as of board direction, forty thousand dollars for, um, the elective. Disrupt site, um, two five million for the last in three point million for Sam Way Way. And then, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, well, you know, registered for Minnesota, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it was kind of general funds item, and they were current designated to be the resources. One thing, uh, we came across, we're going through some of the EP and very fun thing. So what I'm hearing, I just took a shot of the page of the original state, very great, you can all see it. And essentially the state awarded the twenty nine point million dollars to the library. The account match is, um, half of that, four million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So where today, original grants was, was a resolution by the bird was, um, grant, which the local honey mesh intend to be provided by very active fund fees. And that was all, but those have been slow to accumulate. And so currently the library, you know, gets, it's placed in the near future. Um, and fund is actually pretty much fund half of there today, the two not two point five million dollars. And ER for budgets, as one of the super points point out yesterday, um, there's actually been at two, four, five million of impact funds designate for the library. And in addition to that, there's another thing down that just for schools, the number two point seven million. But the three hundred thousand is actually designated, um, for Larry Keyes using very packed funds. And I think that product is currently on, it's taking simple. In this system, there's already twenty four million designated for the match. And in addition to that, over the last year, so they can actually be looking on design because we're doing design process since we come up with three percent time plans. And so, um, account itself already extended from ARP's four hundred thousand dollars of money funding. So that also goes towards such, so actually contributed to eight million, uh, four point five million. So the news with that is, uh, gives a little bit of stability on that point nine that was be for reserves or general reserves. Um, just want to kind of show there's a gap, so this good way of about a hundred thousand dollars, um, that the board inside. So I would like to address that eight thousand dollars that eventually we need the full point nine and take the whole today. Knowing that bill of library today though, but goal was kind of match the whole. So that's a little bit of news on the library. Um, now going through RP and this system, and as you can, it's legible, it makes as large as it. Um, so I'll try through some of these numbers. Now, first I'm gonna say the potential Jeff funds is potential. We had a chance to edit with finance team, the fifteen, yeah, yeah, but just some things around, uh, over the last twenty hours. So, and run two and seven, two, two, five. And if the supervisors have a little bit, the remaining numbers are, um, one thousand, six, five, oh, two, one. So if you really dig into, you know, you can find relationship on page two, uh, two ninety two or twenty one of one V two. So the number is ten, seven, two, two, five, one thousand, six, fifty point one is a full number. This is road fund, and you're looking at arrows are is RP, and what it's saying is that there's supposed to be six funds potentially. The fund contribute to this road fund. Total of these funds is ten at one million dollars. Now currently, as I mentioned previously, there was something a little over four million was going to be allocated to that road fund, Jeff fund. And it's just a crap at this point, we don't know. Those are just tons of, well, we had time, it came up a few hours ago, so, um, but in a good way, there's a tell that, you know, there is maybe six dollars there. Um, related to verify and see what fund have been allocated. But these numbers within open GAF and ER, uh, as a matter of fact, the nerve where the word there, when at their, their spread breakdown. And they go to page eighteen of forty two, all those two eighty three. Um, and look about half through the page, yields number seventeen million, three hundred and nine thousand, six, six, seven. So the nerve right there. So open to ERP, same map, but what's saying is there was Jeff funds be expended to ten million to the words. We now is four million, so maybe there's a six dollars there to determine. So then we jump over.
Let's stop real quick. I wouldn't include incorporating the roads that we've been direction for this season, knowing that we're going to look at the potential of the grant fund for following. The six million potentially be split from.
Correct. So what, so you would track four million and theoretically possibly still signaling that would be allocated. I don't know six news reside somewhere at this point, but ERP and OPV, the current status is ten million was to be gone from no fund to these, these funds essentially. So ten G, the six remain, like you're saying. So we jump over to protection fund, which essentially pair of projects and protection projects and L projects and things like that. So, um, the protection fund, if you go to your notes, um, if super is there by worksheet from yesterday, we go to. Page twenty two, one, two, page three, seven. And the number is up here.
Sorry, what?
I think I just found it's three, seven, eight, seven. Pause, a lot of number lying around, pause to the public. There's, we've been just having number everywhere last week, and so I'll just pause it. Page eighty seven.
Information for public that information is attached to agenda yesterday's meeting.
Thank you. So if you had to go to page eighty seven, there isn't open GAF, there wasn't EP, three, seven, do match to the two twelve and six fifty thousand, two and thirty six fifty two transferring from five and zero, zero, one. And what we noticed was, and I'll tell a little step. So. Um, why, in my opinion, some of these aren't made up to date as of day of general reverse, general fund energy. Because there's been additions over the last few weeks, months. And yeah, this is called open GAF, and then we enter our budgets, and they get it in, it's a snapshot in time, and then that's uploaded into ERP, which is their finance system. It's just now in time. When things change after that, sometimes things don't update it, it's kind of a line. It's not anybody's fault, it's just a process that occurs in. Oh, and it's back to page three, seven. What this saying highlighted in orange, the orange items were items are supposed to fund by general fund. You can kind of barely see it. Oh, yeah, I can see it there. So in open gun, in any of the AP, if you have those items that have a little G next to, go up to three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Again, we don't know if that means it's available, um, in the bit, but. OPV and EP TA soon do these projects, there would be no fund into them. Just leave it at so, and one, two, um, a little sheet, and I guess we can read them. Okay. So one, you fast, your attendance, S, page B eight, eight. So it's page. This is kind of the part in red. Price and account. And one thing found going this is that the historic bank, which originally was befunded ARPA and through general funds. That seven, twenty seven fifty thousand, but seven hundred and thirty thousand, because we have a little bit on sign. Um, that designated to be funded by the general fund. And so in the system that way, again, I know if this, we don't this, the general set aside, not at point, but the remaining funds are kind of park hack funds and some other things. But hundred and three thousand was a historic, but we knew about this to part that were hope building, you know, some good issue, obviously. And now the projects kind of with mine. And so in government P as well, seven hundred and three thousand front of fund is allocated that project essentially. And as of A, it's not okay, so could mean available or could mean.
Can I copy their sound gets available?
Okay.
That's some, um, but you just said it's in our P and open go.
Right, but I think it was CEO.
I just wanted to buy something. We began doing directions, the racks are not reflected in any systems because we have not received the approval, the board move forward reductions. So his link is the numbers were placed by me, me, they have been changed to the stem. So potentially, they look are available there, we are being posted to move to a way. So we just keep it in mind, this has not been modified. The same remains, it was like in May, I smart made, they started doing the bits. And so until you give us direction, we will be moved on so. I just want caution, because of that, have a finding there and looking, you have a finding there, mine there. I'm just want to caution about.
Yeah, I'm just in this particular point, the historical part bathroom, we direct on that initial legend, my recollection, that we were going to pause the ARPA funded project. We were going to shift the dolls in operations.
Okay, so we're going to enter dimension four, which is five, this issues in the workshop. So I request for hours work due days or weekends, we come back the right.
Our quickly, their questions remain, we're going to continue.
Yes.
Plug forward to, I'm going to get there, um, getting close now. These are additional questions that staff is going to review.
Correct.
To firm outcome.
Yeah, and we have been very tall, yeah, on press, so then we're beginning to, where the ones are today, they're if they're removed, and so we're moving what island those are on. So they can see big picture. I just warn you.
Before you step off, to make sure we're all around some, because I'm here is running times. And we're not all under problem.
Exactly.
Same thing. I think the work we've been doing, how do we get rooted on this year? So from this point on, a unit is building, um, because it's semi like, this is me, we don't use some of the offset in there. We have to be careful, one time funds are used.
Let's get into that, have to get through, have to make sure we're on that. We all understand.
Yes, but he's right, like I mentioned before, one time you understand what the ARPA did, you're using time to make a photo tip. And it's gonna be, we're gonna be the same old next year, the same two next. Perhaps that was any trillion dollars or any five million dollars, but we'll be in the city. I just want to caution you, so it doesn't mean they cannot this year, but it's gonna come back to you next year. Yes, so we're working the numbers, we need time to be able to identify, we we have funds available by. So all was scheduled, but mostly parts already to continue to reduce, looking for the tax, but look, try me that is, it's not available right now. Can we end up this?
I will per question. And again, um, that original tenement from the general fund, just general fund, the rose tenement, that's my six mobile, it wasn't ARPA files for calculation. As supervisor said, I said the file from markets.
Got to iron out to just worry. Um, but let's comment and then bring it back.
If you'd like, I could come, James, please better speak hard zoom, please press turn of the red hand on, and James will start with Robertson.
I'll try to rewrite my incited previously the last meeting, but, um, I'll say briefly, they have not only of me, I speak concern, if I didn't listen to that board, note I'd not. If it's actions in the best just county, no one be surprised if our negative your consequences result is action of fear. I should take the layoffs permanently on the tape today, though you still work in the bud. And this, this is my opinion, this is an F to obviously into often actually a battery division, I believe, wrong. Who wants devastated by layoffs, there should be some fairness in the process. Layoffs of less senior employees are normally life, not in ways with years expense. And I personally recall, the work would tend to be performed by independent contracts. I feel this is to be a work to other confidential and credential management employees. I feel that if it's a young position, these not occurring. Does the board realize that saves aren't exactly indicated? Uh, you will be giving thirty five thousand dollars this year due to the cost point. I estimate that saving are probably half of that in the long run. And even in future years, I would ask EA confirm that, just sure I'm leading you wrong. And so let's say you gave three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in salaries, actually because of cost and that are really, you know, half of that not. Um, I'll correct record, board did not sign contract out the higher office in two thousand three, nor was it, I'm sorry, two thousand, nor is that decision when the board made in the board, uh, was. That are then abandoned to them, twenty three, then it also isn't considered, uh, made in day twenty four. Instead of bringing their back with the fist study directed by the this year's to be easy way out to source the office with a fiscal study, knowing that it will prove, uh, actually saving or house money. I would ask you why the has an apprentice law commitment to a state price for three, four years, counties sure the price won't cease. I do the if pre-plunk justice, the one attorney without raising rates, been paid high too much last year, or the contracts entered to with the future action mind. I thought the board would print it indicate the hide model is working. Suddenly appears CEO or the board feels that it's not, and CEO does not look in the councils, because some have to factor, doesn't know strength, weakness, educate and background of the reasons in the office. This is not the way to imagine law office, ask the board to take a look at a loan for impact fees, uh, fund, uh, library, which, um, other act fee funds, they can inner transfer inner phone. And also look at the app, accounting all the class assignments, special pay amendments of last year. Thank you. I'm making sure.
Steve Denise.
Morning, good evening, your chair. I'm Nina Cardenas, five, two, one, president.
Denise Khan, uh, president of a CIO chapter.
We just a request, we're looking over the past concessions for our members, the Liberty Bay, Valerie Freeze, Earl Loz. And we as a member like request that can consider putting free in the four party hour admin cash options. And then are the highest amendment and are the high paid county should be going to suffice annual cash, which is typically a base to help some of workforce.
Your chair previously mentioned possible early payouts. Will be an option for the interest in the, in taking that option to possible savings before any cuts to the force. Thank you.
Next in chamber, David. Next in chamber, David?
David, mental condition three, speeding on any behavior. I also learn hoster, choose a cigarette road drive, uh, put her, uh, negotiating to you. And fortunately, due to schedules, and I make it last week, a lot of things happen. Uh, do you hear that before, do you want to remind everyone the idea of axes and radio one cent? The city, by the way, is one that's higher than the money, think being easy, easier to our systems, we recognize the need. Certainly spends many times here, over the years, chief, all we're doing is doing it the same, material, the same. So interesting, ready, this seemed to be an important part, whatever concessions, which you already want, I already talked about concessions. Whatever sessions you have next year, just don't change, you'll be saying basically the same thing, it'll be doing anything, that's different, you guys are staying same. I've only been here four years, I'm already old person, well, the oldest, the longest therapist in my office. Only been few years, you know, which is what happens over and over. Nice, my profession, I love, is people come to train, they get licensed, move away. So instead of having, you know, I do my profession, I like myself, it's pretty therapist, reading material and being the best as I can be. But instead of sand be okay, have quality therapists who have experience and know how to equip you, knowledge. Some meaning here, take their experience to adapt for somebody, that's just example. So we start cutting efforts, cutting pay and all the things ringing up, you're going to lose people, other companies pay a lot more. And seriously, it wasn't for purrs, I'd be, let me see, about 10 other places that pay me more. First thing out there, people I know and people I work with are very hard to commit, I know. The passion people know in my youth, joy of them, like a little, we're glad, our skills, our experience, grateful for the opportunities offered.
Go on rep, if you can.
Thank you, I'm grateful for the opportunity, this audience has for me to end up saying, thanks.
Next, Joel.
Good morning, bird, good to get talked to, and but I won't speak to this morning, my capacity, private pilot, so is the director, and just thought on this. So, and a gentle, soft landing, right? One likes the feeling of a bump, a hard impact at the end. I think ultimately, we're asking the board to do, that includes like all apartment heads, probably all the staff, to bring county in for a safe landing. And I just kind of press on the board, I know you will know, the impact of layoffs is truly a huge impact. It, the thing I think saw with COVID, for example, with the impact that lost several loyalty occurs between orzains and people, right? And then that type loss of loyalty both ways occurring of that hard store. And similarly, the impact of layoffs can be very hard too, because people no longer feel like everyone's looking out each other. I do know it's going to be packed in terms of all different things. One thing, you know, I know all the departments are going to get everything we put in, really in terms of from trust and other things. But at the same time, do with the board, adjust some of those reserve aspect things, at least get through the gentle land and a smooth step down. Do we adjust and go through the next year? I know this count has had a long term ability to exceed our venue direction and come in under our instructions. So deal with a little bit of a sit in here, hopefully with the high remaining in place, you board can present safe wing. I know hard, you're doing hard work and I appreciate it, appreciate the time, budget shop yesterday. If the budget shop did see it, the old, some degree of ally, there aren't really necessarily easy answers. But at the same time, I just hope that we can touch down, if everyone can work on the plane, can maintain good relationship that county is to develop over those really three years especially. I know, for example, my partner, another thing that we had, our department well, I mean, we had a case in study five years ago, just even might go within 90% of five county media excluding Santa Barbara, so they were small counties. Got to that point, some of the rates that have discussed have been just to take that level practically 85, 90% of the five county media. To just heard our struggles from those numbers get to hold and grow in gap. Thank you for your time, trust you will land safe, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Next, Shirley.
Good morning, I'm Billy Moore, deputy counsel, I'm off, I've taken the time to be here and speaking my personal capacity, this is not legal lips rendered by your long serving attorney. I, I would just like to incorporate, reference all the cuts that have been made by Barbara Thompson, well, hence myself at board appearing June and on Monday, as well as other meetings regarding budget discussions such as on September 8th. And what cuts that are made back in June. I'm not going to repeat everything today, but I want to clarify some inaccurate information that was provided on Monday. We refer to as being second funded, we do provide on its, this provides, this apprentice law is not providing, some of which a bit law for would be prohibited and provide. And you would need retain additional outside capital, additional costs, some of us would need to be formed by staff in a part, such the auditors, but staff are already packed by green free and whatnot. I would like to reiterate that we did a fight against our budget can be used without eliminating our positions, which in eliminating our positions, we save $3,590 this year. Also, previous alternative sources of non-oral funding had tied to as funds is not, they are CS and CSS, long-term Dean, or road bridge projects, like for federal highway association. The administration, sorry, impact fees, developer reimbursement fee, which is sort of a note, we switch, I think, to cost plan. But some of the products, they get closed out, two year later, we tried to elect on cost plan, you would not be able to. Also, statement is made, if you make cuts now, you'll in the same year, but that's true. Our bit will be revised from the cut we've identified this year, because it next but won't include, uh, bottom salary or due to retirement. Although I have faith that the county have additional revenue this year, such as the T O T that you are planning to adopt for the discussion Tuesday, 14. In cases in apartment fees, including for the sales and accounts committed yesterday, budget shop, possible sales tax, other is revenue direction you are exploring. If you don't make the directions that are required and not to elate our business in that, is being to personal target.
I have one on Zoom, Mr. Broski, I'm muted after minutes.
Uh, thank you, good morning, board supervisor, and thank you so much for how this format, when listen and this, that really is a lot to me and I know some others. So I'm thinking to us, comment Boeing of pilot Joe Buck and salt land. The one thing that I was admitting is discussion, I brought it, I think, a few months ago. What is a long-term plan that today's supervisor see for the county? Because we're going to make all the changes for athletes, it's very painful. But if we come for that off-ling, at least you need to know where the ways and how long is and what the other conditions are going to be. And I guess the point is, what is play on, not only for this year, but five years now, 10 years from now, 20 from now? Because you can make some concessions now, knowing that it's going to be some benefit or, but you have a plan for it. And that's one thing I still understand, how you make the decisions without articulating those bars. All the ways that's being just remember, these are disparate types, this is not imaginary. So as I mean, firstly, going to be, I don't believe that board is providers is doing it nonchalant. And no, not to any of them about this, it's just a mission. The others that I have is, are our Dartmouth ads thinking about artificial intelligence might be able to make their darkness or deduct and make do require less than that, that's the way personal industry going, starting new business, and I shocked at how artificial intelligence is actually reducing the amount of oscillation that I need. I know that's equal some here, but it really is, the wings are going. I encourage anybody that is into those, just start using artificial intelligence, and that's what it could do, and it might help the county. Thank you very much. And finally, oh, quick, it's one house built on a part building, not OE, the minerals, not to look here, maybe not even the sale tax. Strongly, strongly encourage you to, to demand going future and ask developers to comment us right with it. Because again, that's a beat avenue east, uh, revenue boost, can have that on the, thank you.
Andrew, you've been muted in half three minutes.
Uh, thank you very much, can you hear me? Uh, I'm the best of the public, my name is Ricky Arriola, present the management employees group. Uh, make employees, in fact, all county employees must protect their files, flows and pay reductions. Uh, management employees group poses an immediate impact affecting the employee. We always tell you, screen financial deficit, understand and challenge your AC. However, these challenges did not reach with a workforce. Uh, key inability questions made, what specific cost, the financials, control conditions are based to monitor all expenditure budgets. Actively and effectively as the board involved in oversight, why did it take so long to recognize there is problem? What passcode budgets prove with no or projected deficits? Money piece were not part of financial decisions overseas, and should not be the burden or action did not attribute. Maybe all county employees are the fundamental essential public services. They provide critical today's risks to the public depends, under any of them, financial cuts, damage, or risk delivery publicly trust. The cost of negative impacts will outweigh needs to save, loss flows or reductions lead to surge gaps, loss of institutional knowledge, and greater long-term costs. The public will ultimately feel the consequences. We fully and respectfully urge the board to reject any of furloughs or reductions. Maintain longevity pay and merit-based salary increases, ensure all county employees remain active during the first challenge. Any negative impact to employees is a known situation. Stand raised solutions that preserve service while sacrificing the people who provide leverage together on long-term plan to increase revenues for future income. Uh, thank you for giving us a great to speak.
Thank you, and that comes to public.
All right, thank you much, we'll call the hearing, bring it back to board, we're coming to a good start.
I want to scatter, going back through numbers yesterday in the workup, very, not only informative, but enlightening on some situations. I wanted to remind everybody that when you're looking at budget, that when we're looking at general fund, reserves and balances, that working of the balances, not the number into the budget, the budget is just mechanism of utilizing our revenues for service for our committee. I have serious concerns that we not have full grasp of where everything is. And in light of the positive things that Ms. Lu brought forward, it doesn't mean that the money available there and is one-time funding. I mean, as some of our comments, what a long-term solution, and the long-term solution is we really got ours in the foot with 67, this percent, 7%. Um, we look at numbers, you look increase in the salary and benefit, it dominates into your OEB cost, it dominates into purchase cost, it dominates so many areas that it really sends me to say that, but we have to look at what are we going to do to move forward. And these are not easy decisions. This is a tremendous amount of work for staff, bringing all information together, transparency level, I want to amend everyone because I've been more transparent what we're doing and where challenges are than I seen in, for a decade. So it is a tough effort to get out of this, but fortunately, we have admitted to having a bad spot this year. And we may commit very clear, not only to all of the constituents that we resent, but only way we will ever have any chance of passing a one cent sales tax in an area of the county by earning the trust to our resident, and that we have actual controls in place to ensure that this not happen again. These are the sins, I, I'm going to a log out where we could go with some of these options that were forward. I feel have to more than one of options in order to balance the budget, I don't even know that's enough. At least it's been a day unless miraculously you find, you know, that there is, you know, money available, but as super revolver, that's one-time money. And we already used one month last year, and that was $6 million in sandworks. Impact fees came in, I'm not sure if that was right total form, but we can't keep doing that, because we'd be digging ourselves a hole that we never got out of. So my heart goes out to every employee that potentially is hacked by this. I also feel anything that we do to any of our stuff, we have to take on, and there are cuts, we need to all take the cut, that's all I have, thank you.
Super Zaskis? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I, in the same school, I have super crew, I'm going to come to this. And you know, I understand the, you know, the sentiment, the soft ending, get it? And I consider, okay, so we theoretically as well, time need to soften ending. I'm concerned we're going to do the same thing next, or essentially not just rough land, but crash. And so this is my concern, that if we deal with the actual problem and try to end it, it's just going to get worse until the right one. Actually, we need to come ahead and think it's going to be very, very, much worse. So I agree, I think we need to get the option that you ring, we explain up here, we need to accommodate them. I don't know if that's going to be enough, I don't have, I'm not counting on this, I count on us needing some money with some misplaced, I mean, I don't think going to happen. We're going to explore it out, we have more to do, but not by eggs and baskets, we're going to stumble upon a million dollars that we need. I am prepared to, I'm full prepared to engage in the puzzle that we're proposed as far as kind of flow longevity pay cuts, all that, we need to assess, I think, to be the O2, at least I am, I don't see a way around it, I think it's going to end up in a do. First, we have work to do for that, but that's all I'm.
Thank you. So first off, I just want to say, I have so much respect for all our hardworking employees, and I know how low you are, I know how much care about town and the people that you serve, see on a day basis. And, and so been really a main experience for this here as a supervisor and get to so many of you. So when it is said that we take the easy way out, please know this is not the easy out, this is the hardest way out we're being right now. To disappoint so many of you, to, I understand you weren't, it isn't necessarily your fault how we're in this situation. But unfortunately, we are in this situation, we have to find path forward. So I agree with the figure about creating long to plan, I think that is something we absolutely do, I think we absolutely have got to start focusing what we're going to do to address, bringing more revenue, because it's going to just get harder. And things, I don't think it's going to be a lot easier for us, like we just threw this, next year's going to be great. And so I think we really, as a, need to really work hard on that. I'm hopeful that maybe the money not be as systemic, I'm going to be hopeful that is sunny, can help us through this. I still think, you know, it is going to be some kind of one-time work of, we've got to find path forward with revenue that we're being in, we've got balance with our expenses. And allow us, when you have one funding coming in, be able to kind of special things and, and with the revenue, that then I think how we sure that our course is paving in future. I, I be interested in knowing, so we are looking at longevity, we are looking at our load, and we're going to look at absolutely everything. What does an admin fees pay out, whatever is, what is that number, right? It gets only fair that if we're going to get everything, and I say that, I'm sorry, I know that when you're managed and when you're salary, I know guys heading in way more than for the hour a week. But we are going to look everything that's on label, I want to make sure that our considering have everything. And I would be, been working some of the reserves, potentially some of the buyouts, particularly unlike what Steve has to the table, see if there's additional thing that's going to be available. And we all should be looking at that. Unfortunately, are in really hard spot, I think that's same that we, we've addressed, and I have done everything can, try to identify any dollar could be available, so we could, you know, where this gap we've got, and as of right now.